Welcome, Mr. Ed Hallbig to the chair seat there. In the past, James has been the secretary. So I would like to make a motion that it would be you that would be the secretary of this. Do I hear a second on that, or does somebody else have a different?
Dave Nick second's that motion.
Is there any discussion on that?
I guess we need to know if Ed's gonna accept or not.
I don't have a vote.
You have a voice, though.
You do have a voice.
Yes, I'll certainly accept.
All right, well, I appreciate that. All those in favor of Mr. Hallbig being the secretary of Planning Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It was unanimous, it looks like. And I can't see that if you would make that announcement, Elise, when you see it. I couldn't necessarily see everybody from here.
Oh, yes, 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 I got you. Yes, unanimous.
Since we're, since we're audio. Second thing I'd like to do real quick is again, welcome Mr. Ed Hallbig. Am I pronouncing that correctly? All right, excellent. Okay, to the approval of minutes from June 2nd. I have a motion to approve those.
Rita Adams, I make a motion to approve the minutes from June 2nd.
I'll second that. Mike Johnson. As far as discussion, I was looking at the, at the minutes, and I would ask, we have, in going through some of the projects that we've done the last six, eight, 10 months, I have referenced back to previous minutes and things like that, even from years back, to try to get an idea of what was being discussed. And a lot of times, I was having to go from there into the materials, because the minutes didn't seem to describe enough of what was happening. So if we could make sure that we're being pretty robust in, in enough of a description so that you can see it to then go to the materials we need to. All those in favor of the approval of minutes signify by saying aye. All right, public comments for non-agenda items. It does not look like we have anybody signed up. Was there anyone wanting to speak about non-agenda items? Okay. Commission member comments? Any commission member comments? I will say real quick, I was hoping Mr. Root was here. I was, Mr. Hallbig and I were discussing the item number nine on the agenda, and, and I did not mean for it to come out as a directive, where it says, "In order to appoint a subcommittee." I was hoping to make a motion of that tonight, but it had not, we had not formalized a motion, so I was a little surprised that, that we were using that type of, of language on it. Mr. Hallbig and I discussed it, Mr. Root had some opinion on it, and, and so we ended up coming up with what we did. It really wasn't meant as a directive, just so you all know, it, it just, we're having a discussion tonight, so. All right, that was all for commission member comments. So the next item is the authorization of Mr. Hallbig to review and sign Platts on behalf of the Planning Commission. My understanding is, Elise, you have that authority right now, is that right?
So I can sign off on them, I cannot review them?
Okay. And so we are giving that to Mr. Hallbig to review and sign. I'll make a motion that we do that. Is there a second?
Second.
This was something that we had given James approval to do. Oh, second by, erase your name.
Rita Adams, she got that part, I think.
We had given that authority to James before, it's something that he needs to, to be able to get his job done. All those in favor, unless there's additional discussion, all those in favor of Mr. Hallbig being able to review and sign Platts on behalf of the Planning Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Unanimous.
All right. Now, we have a public hearing on the renaming of a portion of Nellie Road to Nellie Creek Road or Nellie Branch Road, consistent with the renaming policy.
Good evening. Nick Walton, Coney County Addressing Office. We had Mr. Donnie White, who is a developer of the property, requested a realignment of the road and a road renaming for Nellie, and our roads that were approved for that were Nellie Creek Road and Nellie Branch Road. I just want to quickly run through our addressing policy and why this has to come to Planning Commission. So we have the justification for the road naming, which was the re-road alignment, which I think we have. Can you go to the second part of it? Okay, so the proposed alignment, you see where the current lay of Nellie is in green, and we come to an intersection, and since we cannot continue the road name through a 90-degree turn intersection, you would have to do a road renaming. We collected the affected property owners, and we corresponded with them, notifying them of this meeting happening today, and notifying them of their required approval for the road name change. We have our map showing the proposed change. We had the three submitted road names, which went to the Road Naming Committee. One was denied and two were approved, and that was the Nellie Branch Road and Nellie Creek Road. And for the road name change to come to Planning Commission, we needed 75% of the affected parties to agree to it. That's also in your documents as well, are the signatures of the affected parties that came up to 75% of the affected. And the last of this is, we had the newspaper notification made 15 days prior to the hearing, which Mr. Ed has copy of as well, if you need to see that. And I also sent out, let's see here, I sent out a last notification of the meeting today to the affected parties by mail on 6/19/2025. The last part of this is to bring the requested road name to Planning Commission, and outlined in our road naming and address policy is the Planning Commission shall approve all road name changes.
So I've got a question here. The information in green says Nellie Road. Then there's the information in gray that's the Phase 2. I'm guessing that's around the golf course. Is in gray, also is Nellie Road. Which is, what's being proposed to be changed, and what is, and which one is the one that is staying?
Okay, so Nellie in green is the current lay of the road, and I know it's really small, but if you zoom in there, there's a little box that I have boxed out here. It actually shows the future proposed road name, which is following southward. In gray going, well, it would show on this would be going south, but actually on the map here, which would be going east, is continuing down Nellie. The grayed out portion past the intersection, that would be Nellie Road, but it would be private. So Nellie would, oh, and I forgot to include all of this, these are all county roads. So Nellie, Nellie Road right now is a county road. The proposed renaming would also be a county road, it would just be a continuance of what Nellie is right now. And then Nellie past the intersection would be a private road.
But Nellie Road in green currently exists, or does not exist?
Currently, it exists. Nellie in green exists. So if we go to the first map, it will show the current layout of the properties there. And if you want, I have a printout as well in the back, if you want me to bring that up, too.
No, that's okay, I'm just, okay, so, Nellie Road currently exists, and we're, we're gonna be coming straight out and making an intersection, which means that it can't continue the...
Yeah, so every time you make a 90-degree turn at intersection, it would be a road renaming, yes.
So it'll rename, so, so Nellie Road is gonna change and end up going straight, rather than turning at that one point?
The current lay of the road would intersect at a 90 and change and be renamed, or proposed renaming.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm confused.
Go ahead.
You got Nellie Road in green, you got Nellie Road private on a, up here, is that being changed?
So we have the full extent of Nellie Road. The developer has proposed that Nellie Road would become an intersection, and then that would create a new named road. So we have the existing Nellie, and we have a proposed Nellie Road County, a proposed Nellie Road private, and a proposed new named road, which would start at that intersection. But it would follow the same line as Nellie, except for where you see it cuts through proposed lots 43, 44, and 45. It would stop there, continue into the intersection, and then continue through the intersection, but would become private at that point. And the new road would extend from the intersection down and pick up where the existing Nellie is.
Gotcha, so 40, 40...
That wasn't, I, I get it now.
43, 44, and 45, that road, section of road will disappear?
Yes, and I, on 42 as well, and 41. Yeah, it would, the road would shift up a little bit, and then it would gain, go back to itself after the intersection.
Going on down, when you said there was 70%, how many residences are affected that were on the original Nellie Road?
So there's owners, but there's no residents. There's owners of properties, but no one's current, the only address we have out there right now is for the boat storage, but that's not a residential address.
I got you. Okay. So that's a business address, is that part of the storage for the, for the development?
Yes, that's part of, it's part of the Windsor storage.
So there's not a business or anything like that that would be affected by an address change?
The only thing that would be affected is possibly if they have either, do you have electrical out there? Yeah, so the, the address for the electrical meter would have to change.
So what about the remaining property owners? Is this all also Windsor property, or is this individual lot owners?
It's not part of the subdivision, it's individual owners.
So it may just, they may have water or electricity on those other lots?
They don't have an assigned address from us, and nine times out of 10, you would need an assigned address from us before you can get services.
So none of those outside of the development have an assigned address at this point in time?
No.
Excellent.
But with the proposed road name change, if they ever wanted to do something out there, it would be named after the new road name.
The, the biggest thing about a name change, I think we've all gone through it before, is that if there are businesses on the existing road, you now have business cards that have to change, you've got letterhead that's got to change, you've got websites that have to change, you've got historic information and contact stuff and things like that that need to be considered. This sounds like it's free of all of that type of hardship? Are there any other questions?
I just want to go back through and be clear of which road is named what. Can you go to the bottom? Yes, this one here. So is Nellie Road coming into the intersection? And then it's going into a private road, and the private road's name's going to be?
It would be Nellie. So since it's a road continuation, it would just maintain the same road name, just the ownership of the road would change.
Okay, so it's gonna be Nellie. The road that takes a 90, what's that road gonna be named?
So the proposed names right now are Nellie Creek Road and Nellie Branch Road.
Okay, so that's where the change is at.
Where it says St. Andrew or whatever it is.
Yeah, I, I tried to block that out.
Yeah, that's gonna be your Nellie Branch Road.
I, I believe when we saved the document, that, that square might have shifted up. I had, had it covered before.
Okay, all right, that makes sense now. And I appreciate the, all the work you put in to reaching out to all the landowners around there. Good to see.
Thank you, sir.
We may need to call you back up, but for now, I need to go to public comments on it. Thanks so much, Nick.
You're welcome.
All right, public comments regarding the renaming this portion of Nellie Road. We have Kathy Chitwood. Kathy, we tried to hold this to four minutes, there's not many people here tonight, so if you're, four minutes and 20 seconds, it's okay, but we try to hold it down.
This is my second appearance before county council. Any of you here in 2008? First time Falcons Lair tried to rename it to St. Andrews? That's why that confusion is. It still says St. Andrews on Google, I can't get them to fix it. I probably made a grievous error. I sold Donnie, or Falcons Lair, the corner there of Nellie Road. This legacy farm road is my property, building a house there. Sold him the few lots there on the corner and down the hill. Didn't realize it was gonna completely eliminate my portion of Nellie Road. My grandmother was born on this property in 1901. Her name was Gaynell. My mother will be 92 this year, her name is Nail. When Buddy Hawk went through and named all the county roads, my dad petitioned to name it Nellie, in honor of both those women. My sister owns what's below where the proposed road will come back in. She's upset that things are gonna change, but she's in Oregon and cannot attend. We don't object per se to Nellie Creek, as long as we maintain the Nellie portion of it, for historical purposes, as you were saying. What we object to is the rampant development everywhere in the county. I live off Bannon Land Road, it's like I-85. I'm moving out there to get some peace and quiet and look, just look what's happening. Makes me wanna cry every time I drive out there.
All right, Ms. Chitwood, just to be clear, so you are not in objection to Nellie Creek Road?
I'm in, I'm object to the reason it has to be changed, I guess is what we're saying.
That area that says Legacy Farm Road, that's yours? You have a wonderful piece of property, it looks like.
Yeah, and see, it joins my sister's, she's not gonna live there.
Gotcha.
I could show you the picture of the bear and cub that live there, though.
All right, so we, we have a petition to change it to one of the two. I see all these, Mr. Hallbig, I see all these circled Nellie Creek Road. Nellie Creek Road, are we making, are we to finalize the name?
I'm gonna lie back to Nick on that one.
I don't see anything that, as far as Nellie Branch Road being circled.
So we have the, this Nick Walton, Coney County Addressing. Three are, three road names are to be proposed. One was denied during the review by the Road Naming Committee, and we came up with the two, which was the Nellie Branch and Nellie Creek, and those were the options that were sent off to the affected parties. I cannot answer 100% because our document just states that the Planning Commission shall approve all road name changes. I'm, I'm not sure if that means you select the particular name, or if you approve the name that has been submitted.
You said there were 75 people?
75% approval.
75%?
Yes, 75% approval of the affected parties.
So is that what, these five?
Those are the five, that's the 75%, and I have a list of all the affected parties over here.
Okay, so they, all the 75% voted for Nellie Creek?
It sounds like Nellie Creek.
Yes, sir.
Were there any opposition that was, the, actual opposition to the change at all?
This is our second round of road namings here. There was initial opposition to the first couple of road names, but I didn't hear of any other opposition after this was brought to me. By the way, this is Donnie White, he's the developer who brought the request.
Any other questions that people might have?
This is Mickey Haney, just for clarification, so there was no opposition to the Nellie Creek Road name?
Not that I have heard. I got the approvals that were sent back to me, and we sent notice to all the affected parties.
I'll make a motion that we have settled the Nellie Creek Road name.
Dave Nick second's your motion to name the road Nellie Creek Road.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the change that, that Nick had described, and the location described to Nellie Creek Road, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Here we go. All right. At our, at our last meeting, we had, had discussed that there were several things in Chapter 32 that, that needed to be addressed, as we're tackling different parts of things, and I always refer back to eating the elephant, and it's kind of a one bite at a time. But, but Mr. Haney has been so kind as to mark up a lot of Chapter 32, at least to give us a foundation, or a potential foundation and baseline of, of where things need to go. And, and again, I wasn't excited about the agenda saying that we were going to appoint a subcommittee. I know there was a discussion at our last meeting about the potential need to have a, have a subcommittee go through this. Mr. Haney, would you kind of give us an overview of, of the objectives? My thought would be, is that if we could kind of take your information, if we're in agreement, take your information as kind of a foundation and a direction, and then I'm having the plan to make a motion to form a subcommittee of two or three? Yes, sir?
Four. I thought Mr. Markovich was supposed to speak.
You are correct, Mr. Markovich is supposed to speak. I appreciate you bringing that back up. Okay, let's start with public comment then. Mr. Markovich, I apologize, we were just trying to ignore you tonight.
Nah, you would've got to me eventually. I probably would've stood up and ran and waved. Yeah, right. Anyway, for the record, I am Tom Markovich. I think this is a great start. I think Mr. Haney has really hit on a lot of the key issues that are mixed into this particular development ordinance that started out a long time ago as something entirely different. And I think there's still gonna be some things we have to work through, but in general, I think Mr. Haney has hit key parts. One of the things you heard me mention before, when we're talking about potable water, and in, and I like the, I like the, the new definition, including surface groundwater, but I really think we need to include rainwater collection. And because surface water could mean lake surface, it could mean all kinds of different things. So rainwater collection is very specific. I like specifics in, in, in these different meanings. Some of the other things that I noticed, the word street crops up, and it ends up being defined as a public road. I don't know that we don't just eliminate the word street just because it's redundant. And, because that's the only thing that's, you know, where it's referred to generally, basically. I don't know where it shows up in any of our other ordinances, because I haven't done a search on streets yet, but I will. So, and I also thought it was particularly great that Mr. Haney picked up on this idea of the usable area of lots. There's no question that, like, with an isolated wetland that is not regulated water, that is unquestionably, our South Carolina courts have already addressed this, and said it's explicitly private property, and it is a part of that lot unquestionably. So, anyway. Trying to think what else I... Oh yeah, this part that, in the next page where it says lakes and streams, and it says the minimum area of a lot cannot, you can't use the area as a part of that lot acreage. We have two different types of property around the lake. We have a lot that, there was a right of way that became when they built the lake. There are other rights that were there long before that lake existed. Those rights still belong to those people who own that property unquestionably. South Carolina has had to deal with this on the coast. They've made it exceedingly clear, because there's places where the ocean is coming in and eroding sand away, and it looks like the people are losing their lots. Well, they're not losing their lot, because the original property lines still exist. And so that's all well documented law case law. So, we may have to do something there. I just really like where this is headed, and I think Mr. Haney has done a great job. There may be a few little tweaks here and there that we may have to work on, but I think right now it's headed in the right direction. It's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Haney, I want you to speak in just a moment. I, I do want to mention something, since we're bringing Mr. Hallbig up to speed on a lot of this. Mr. Hallbig, I have been on this Planning Commission for quite some time, and I was adding up the number of people that have sat in your chair, and I think that you're number six, since I've been on the commission. And one of the things that I have noticed, and several members have noticed, is that, is that each one of the directors has had somewhat of a different interpretation of our ordinances. And, and someone will get something approved under one planning director, and then they're ready to go for, to do something else, and then all of a sudden, they're not approved, or vice versa. And, and so, as the chairman, I get calls going, wait, what's going on? So we have, as of last year, started tackling several things. We first started tackling 26, because 20, Chapter 26, had some overlays into Chapter 32, and some conflicts within language and definitions. We have voted and cleaned some of that information up. Now we're coming here in 32 and saying, wait a second, this should be over in 26, or things like that, as well as cleaning up definitions. I appreciate very much what Mr. Haney has done, and I'm hopeful that, that this commission will see this as a foundation document in moving forward. I'd like to make a motion in a moment, but I'd like Mr. Haney to kind of talk about what he has, where his origin came from, and what his objective was in going through this.
This is Mickey Haney. So as I read through this ordinance, I realized that there was not a clear separation between private property and public property. There was also some areas, what I would consider partial takings, that had to, we had to give some attention to. So I went through this document and tried... So I went through this document and tried, uh, not only highlighting those issues and try coming up with solutions for them, but also to, uh, take out some of the cookie cutter style, uh, process that was put in place. Uh, well, ESMAs were called out to be a certain minimum width requirement. And as we know, things have changed now. They can come in and run a cable in less than three foot wide. And the other thing that, uh, I've seen inside this document was the, uh, the definitions sometimes did not align. It left you kind of with a vague, uh, understanding that was left open to interpretation. So my goal was to take that away so that the document on its face could be, uh, implemented just as it reads. And anything that needed to vary from that needed to go to the VCA. Um, and any interpretations, of course, would come, uh, from the planning body. But, uh, that's where I was heading. I'm sure there's a lot more that we need to go through and clarify and shore up. Uh, it really, I would like for us to also dig into, uh, the different types of subdivisions. Uh, right now, we've, we've only called out exempt and minor. And then we're saying everything else is everything else. So that's another area that I'd like for us to circle back on and dig into this and make sure that we do appoint needs to be done, uh, with those other type of style subdivisions. That's pretty much where I was heading.
So I was, in, in talking with Mr. Haney and in looking at some of the information, uh, I also think that, uh, that Mr. Hallbig should be involved. Um, trying to figure out how to best dissect this, or as I mentioned earlier, eat the elephant. Um, and Mr. Nix had made a good point at the last meeting that, uh, that we need a small subgroup, potentially not a large group. and my thought mainly was that we need an environment that is not a group sitting up here with a Robert's Rules of Order scenario. That we need a small group that Mr. Hallbig could say, wait a second, y'all are going in the wrong direction. This is going to le- leave us with this area undiscussed. Or this is going to take us down a road we don't want to go down. Or yes, but you should, based on my experience, you should change it to this kind of language. So I, um, I'd like to make a motion that, that a subcommittee group of two, maybe three people from here, and it's a public meeting, but it is in a boardroom setting, uh, where, where you're not, where again, you're able to brainstorm and immediately speak up rather than a Robert's Rules of Order scenario. I would like to ask that Mr. Haney kind of head that up if he is willing to do so. And I would like to, in this motion, uh, ask that we make a determination whether we're going to appoint two people, two planning commissioners, plus Mr. Hallbig, or three planning commissioners, plus Mr. Hallbig. Um, I'd also like to include in that motion that all of us should be reading this document and sending emails to this group saying, here's some other things to look at and consider. Um, but that this document be a foundation for doing that. I don't think that this is going to be, um, that we're going to be able to do this in one push. But I would like to get things in front of council so that we can start implementing and making these changes as we know that they are good changes. Uh, mainly because we have continued to see, um, developments pop up. And as you know, we are not a thumbs up or thumbs down organization with regard to developments. That a developer looks at our rules and as long as they play by those rules, then there is a process for them to move forward. The problem is, is right now our rules have many conflicts within them. And as we see outside developers as opposed to just somebody who's building 10 or 15 homes, we're seeing that those outside developers also have deep pocket attorneys. And so I would like to get as much of this changed as fast as possible and continue to run through that process. Um, but anyway, I'd like to make that motion, that Mr. Haney lead that up and that we have a small subcommittee group. Do I hear a second on that?
Dave Nix, I'll second that motion.
Um, any discussion? Let's talk about it. Should it be two people? Should it be three people? Is this a starting point?
I think we should have three people. And we should have somebody who is a devil's advocate as one of those three people. The other two being advocates to try to make the changes.
So is there a devil's advocate to suggest that we not change it at all? Or the direction that it's changed to? Okay, if there's, if we can find, I mean, I, I would be surprised to find somebody in complete opposition only because it allows for what we are about to see from a development standpoint. When there's clear conflicts and clear, I was surprised in reading it. There was one deal that said court and it just stopped. And I went and asked, what was this supposed to be? And they said, well, it was probably supposed to be courtyard. Well, court and courtyard being...
Or maybe not devil's advocate insofar as the changes that we're putting out. But the impacts of those changes, the negative, possible negative impacts of those changes versus what we have now.
Do you think Mr. Hallbig could play that role with twenty, his experience?
I have to ask him. He's, he's, I know he's got Seneca experience, municipal experience, so that's a possibility.
I, I would like him to have input one because he's the one that's gotta, he's gotta stand in front of somebody. I would think he would be our devil's advocate in saying, I hear what you're saying, but we need to cool the jets a little bit and step back because I'm the one who actually has to implement it. And I kind of played him as the devil's advocate position. Unless there's somebody here on this group that says we shouldn't be making any change, period.
I don't think I could play that devil's advocate. Cause I, I, I agree mostly with Mr. Markovich that these are positive changes. And the, the effort has been, I mean, we've, we've repeatedly seen firsthand the, the conflicts in the rules between the different chapters and especially Chapter 32. So I don't believe I could be the devil's advocate.
Are there a couple of people that would step up with Mr. Haney?
I'll volunteer.
I'll do it.
So that puts three planning commissioners. Is there somebody else that would like to participate? So we've got a motion on the table for, for these three individuals, plus Mr. Hallbig, to, uh, to get together. Do you want to add to the motion when this is to take place, Mr. Haney? Or do you want to do that as a secondary discussion between you three and Mr.?
Yep.
Can I interrupt just for the record? Who were the three for the committee?
Sure, it's, it's gonna be, um, Mr. Haney is gonna lead it up. Uh, Mr. Nix is gonna participate as well as, well as Jake is gonna participate. And then, and then Mr. Hallbig is gonna kind of be the voice of reason through the process.
I think it'd probably behoove us to, to meet afterwards and come up with dates that's gonna, at times.
Okay. I would like us to, I don't want to rush the process in any way. Um, I would like us to get this process started. Again, we, we made some changes to 26 that were in conflict with 32. We've got some things in 32 that need to go to 26. Um, we've got some things, additional things that need to be addressed in here. And then I think that we have a second layer that says this should be a generic document and everything else controlled from Chapter 38 under zoning. So 32 is your, is your blank canvas. Now, if you want to have a zoned area, yes, these other things may be applicable and things like that. But I don't think that that needs to be a step one. I think a step one may be working off this foundation and saying, how do we get this back to ground zero? Or blank canvas, or a workable countywide, this applies to everyone kind of scenario. One other discussion that we have on, does this all sound reasonable as a way to tackle this?
What, I do have a question. What timeline are you looking for?
Um, what timeline do you feel like that you could get something that we could start voting on and getting to council? Again, I don't think it has to be a, this is the final document. But I do think that there are some immediate things in here that can get corrected or addressed, just like you've shown. And I think there are some things I'd like to send you in an email that you may consider as well. For example, DEHEC is no longer DEHEC. It's now Environmental Services. That would need to be changed throughout, things like that.
Right.
Yes, sir?
Are you suggesting stages or present, you know, complete the package and?
I think that, I think that there's going to be more to this that will take a period of time. Again, I would like to see us get back to a canvas that is, applies to the entire county. And then say, however, we've got some zoned areas over here that show more restriction. These other things should be applicable in, in Chapter 38. Um, but that we get to a, a, a clear point rather than muddling too many things that are unfortunately applicable to the entire county that shouldn't be. So stages.
Stages. And then you also mentioned, uh, other council members providing feed, feedback or suggestions.
I would like to ask Mr. Haney to allow for that, that we all be able to provide information as we see here to that.
So Mr. Haney could provide us a line of communication. We could do that.
I think it'd probably be best if we went through it. That way we're not creating a forum online.
That'd be great.
I think that would be great. Um, so what I would like to do in this, in this motion is I want to establish that subcommittee and then let that subcommittee come to us and say, we plan to do this in three meetings, five meetings, two meetings or what. And we think we will have a document by September 1st meeting or the October meeting or whatever. And if the subcommittee says that we really need two meetings, again, for planning commission, please be aware that that is an option. We went to one meeting a month because we, our agenda was light. But if you see that we need to step back in, please know that that would be.
Chairman's duty.
Yes, sir.
We're going back on what Joe was suggesting. I don't know if that took or not. So we should have a phase one set of changes, which is just the cleanup of the existing Chapter 32. And deliver that to you guys and have it voted on. That's my opinion. And then the phase two, we could use the same committee. Phase two would be, uh, removal of redundant information from Chapter 32 to other chapters. That would be a whole set, a new, a whole different deliverable than, than what we've got here. This is not going to swell in the way to being done. I mean, we, we could probably have a meeting or two and have this thing ready to bring to the planning commission.
Okay.
I mean, is that, is that your vision, Mickey?
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that. And if that's the case, um, maybe we can schedule in another planning commission meeting. If this group can get together and have these modifications done.
Between now and our Aug- August, first week of August meeting?
It may lead us to the ability to go back to two meetings and go ahead and push this document. So.
I'm gonna let y'all determine how much information you're ready to move through. But I do think that we need to start getting these changes in front of council.
So who, who is responsible? This is just kind of a point of order question. Who's responsible for setting up this committee meeting and calling it to order? Well, I mean, it's not call, it's not gonna be a, like you say, a...
I think Mr. Haney, I don't want it to be a public meeting. I think Mr. Haney is gonna lead it. He will get with Mr. Um, um, Hallbig to, uh, Mr. Hallbig to set a public notice. And again, my personal opinion is, is it should be in a casual setting and not in a Robert's Rules of Order setting.
I agree. So the, the biggest question we have right now is what time are the volunteers available?
Uh, I'm not volunteering.
You all want to meet about that after this?
That, that's what I'm saying. I think we really need to meet a, we need to get, uh, we need to dig into this document. Uh, come together, have a first meeting, then report back to you with, uh, some, uh, better information that you can work with for us, how close to being ready we are.
Okay.
I know Mr. Hallbig probably doesn't want to work after work hours like he's doing right now. But this, this, I mean, if we schedule during the day, it's gonna be during our work hours. So the only day I'm free not during the day is, or during the day is Fridays. Otherwise I'm gonna be working, so.
Are you opposed to after work hours or?
I am not.
Okay, you are not. Okay. So being as we're in this discussion, um, are y'all open to, is there any meetings happen next Tuesday at this time? Our next, uh, not Tuesday, next, uh, Monday?
So I would have to look because it depends on like if you're wanting to do it in the conference room or if you're not, uh, uh, or if you're doing this. So I would need to make sure that you're wanting to do it in here, that this room is available. You're wanting to do it in wherever you're wanting to do it is available and there's not necessarily...
Well, if it's gonna be open to the public, it needs to be an area that's publicly accessible.
So I want to make sure that's in there that there isn't another...
That's probably gonna find out by...
Which I can figure that out.
We've done subcommittee groups before in the boardroom that were public forum opportunities. Is that still possible for them to do? Not that, again, it's not my committee, but...
Um, you don't mind me asking, what was the last subcommittee that y'all did?
I don't remember. I remember, um, Adam Chapman, um, and Mike was chairman. Um, I don't remember Mike's last name.
That was performing.
Uh, Mike Smith?
Mike Smith.
Oh, yeah, that was...
Um, Mike Smith, myself and one other person and Adam Chapman were in the boardroom. It was a public forum. Um, we had one or two public attendant.
Okay.
Uh, and that was the extent, but it sure was nice to be able to pass papers back and forth across the table.
Yeah, I like that format.
To make it happen.
I think it ought to be a boardroom format.
Okay.
Um, pub, public invited.
Let me get with Jennifer tomorrow. Um, and if there's any information that y'all need to know like immediately as far as how it all works. Cause genuinely, I'm not in a session right at the moment. She goes an email tomorrow and say, hey, this is X, Y, and Z. Uh, I don't see why it would be an issue, but again, I don't wanna say, yeah, good to go and then be...
So why don't we make a tentative plan for us next Monday at 6 o'clock? If something arises where we're not able to do that, then we can send out an email and move those dates.
Sure.
But before we do that, we gotta finish up the motion.
So again, the motion's on the table. We've had a second that said that we're gonna formalize this subcommittee. We're gonna use this information as a baseline. Um, and that the subcommittee is then gonna report back and say, we think we can do this during this window of time and, and go from there. Um, all those in favor of those, of the subcommittee dealing with Chapter 32? Uh, with input from us via email, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. We have covered the, uh, covered the agenda for the night. Is there anything else that, uh, anybody has to say?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for participating.